...a little after nine thirty, and this is the Buncombe County Planning Board meeting that is scheduled for September nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. The first item of business, well, first of all, let me recognize Mr. Les Mitchell, who's been with us for a number of years, and we've missed him, missed his service. Les, I think, began service back in the nineties, didn't you, on the planning board for Buncombe County? And served up until about, what, five months ago, maybe? Something like that. But I really enjoyed serving with Les, and glad to see you here today, Les.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good to see you all.
See you.
First item of business on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and we've, everyone's had a chance to look at it, I think. We need to add an item, and I would like to add it right after the approval of minutes. And it has to do with our vote last week regarding vacation rentals and rooming houses. And we forgot to include in the motion a consistency statement similar to that that we use when we take a look at rezoning requests and this type of thing and vote them up or down. So if you would, we need to add that following item number three on the agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept that?
No moves.
Okay, how about a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item is approval of minutes. Did everyone receive the minutes, and have you had a chance to review them? Are there any comments, corrections, or additions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our amended agenda is, again, to get into the record, the consistency statement for the vacation rental and rooming house vote that took place in our last meeting last week.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I think I made the original motion for that, and I think Bernie made the second, so I would like to, I guess, revise that original motion to include the consistency statement that the amendment regarding definitions for rooming house, vacation rental, and vacation rental complex, and the establishment of conditional use standards for vacation rental complexes and rooming houses, and the revision for the permitted use tables for underlying zoning districts in steep slope, high elevation, and protected ridge overlay districts to separate into different categories and address vacation rentals and vacation rental complexes and rooming houses, is consistent with the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan and updates as of the two thousand and six update. And furthermore, the setting of conditional use standards for use is addressed in the zoning ordinance such as vacation rental complexes and rooming houses does not contradict the Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Okay.
So I would revise that motion and ask that it be readopted.
Is that okay, Mike?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and that, I just want to point out for the record that this has no bearing or change or effect on the vote last week, which was five to one. This is just an element needed for the record, which obviously you guys concluded last week intuitively, but we just need it as part of the written record.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hughes. Now here, a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Kessel, seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, having heard none, all signify by saying aye, your acceptance.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda for today is the discussion of lighting, proposed lighting It may be included in the existing zoning ordinance, subject to our review and comments and public comments and so forth. Debbie, either one, Jillian or Delly, Debbie, I would ask, if you would, to kind of introduce this to us, please, and go over the handout that you've given us.
Yes, sir. These, as you said, are proposed changes within the zoning ordinance that would address lighting standards for new commercial development, so that we would add new definitions for ballast, candela, cutoff, full cutoff, foot candle, glare, illuminance, light source, light trespass, lumen, luminaire, lux, nater, non-cutoff, semi-cut-off, shield, and vehicular canopy to the definition section of the zoning ordinance, and as those are used within the new standards that are proposed. A new section, seventy-eight, six sixty-eight, would be added, and it would include the purpose of the lighting standards, to allow for reasonable use of outdoor lighting, which would minimize light pollution and promote energy-efficient lighting. As I said, applicable to new commercial development. There would be certain types of lighting that would be exempt from these requirements. Residential lighting, lighting required by any law or regulation, seasonal displays using low wattage bulbs, lighting used by emergency services personnel or directed to be used by them, temporary lighting, except for the temporary lighting, searchlights, laser source lights, and similar high-intensity lights, which are addressed in the next section D, which are prohibited lights, searchlights, laser source lights, high-intensity lights are prohibited except for those that receive a temporary lighting permit. Lighting that's oriented upwards would be prohibited, lighting that could be confused for a traffic control device, and suspended strings of lights, individual lamps with individual lamps larger than forty-five lumens unless for seasonal decorations would be Section E would be lighting specifications with a maximum light level of seventy-five foot candles at any property line, three-foot candles at any public street right-of-way, and a maximum average light level per developed area of the project should be six-foot candles. There are separate standards for vehicular canopies. The total light output for vehicular canopies shall not exceed forty lumens per square foot of canopy. And lighting shall be designed so as not to create glare off-site. Types of lighting would be recessed fixtures that provide a full cutoff or fully shielded light distribution, or surface-mounted fixtures that provide a full cutoff or fully shielded light distribution for vehicular canopies. For outdoor parking areas, the maximum average horizontal illuminance would be six-foot candles. For outdoor display areas, the maximum average horizontal illuminance would be twenty-five foot candles. Fixure types for all lighting fixtures would be full cutoff or semi-cut-off fixtures. For accent and facade lighting, that should be directed towards the face of the building or structure, directed downward rather than upward, and low wattage fixtures with shields close to the building would be required so that reflected light would be minimized. And as this applies to new commercial development, in the process of getting that development permitted, there would be a lighting plan required. And section F addresses that. The plan would be designed and sealed by a qualified professional. It would show the location and height of all exterior lighting on the property. It would provide a printout that has a point-by-point foot candle array indicating the location and the aiming of the illumination devices. It should indicate that the specifications of, and it should comply with the specifications of the section. It would be accompanied by a description of the devices indicating that the type of fixture, whether it's semi-cut-off or full cutoff, et cetera. The zoning administrator may waive that lighting plan requirement if the applicant complies with all the other requirements of these standards and can demonstrate that their lighting would comply with all the requirements of these sections. A lighting plan would have to be signed and sealed by a qualified professional, and it would indicate that it complies with all the standards within this section, and that would be required prior to the submission of a zoning certificate of compliance. There would need to be a signed and sealed as-built drawing, and the engineer would have to indicate that the lighting was installed per the approved plan prior to the issuance of a zoning certificate of occupancy. Number four deals with measurement technique, the light measurements. For light trespass would be made at the property line at the ground level. And section five deals with a permit for temporary lighting. The application for temporary lighting, when approved, could be issued for no more than a period of thirty days, but the permit may be renewed for thirty-day periods up to a total of ninety days, except for lighting such as searchlights, laser lights, and high-intensity lighting. That would be event-specific, and the permit could be good for no more than five days.
Thank you very much. Let me ask you this. What kind of resources did you draw on to come up with this extensive work that you've done? And it looks like you've done a good job with it, the staff has.
There was some, looked some, at some of the standards in the International Dark Skies Model Ordinance, but this is not really a dark skies. This is more just lighting standards within the zoning ordinance, so a lot of zoning ordinance lighting standards were looked at. That includes Asheville, and Woodfin, and Chapel Hill, and some other places.
Speaking of Asheville, I understand they do have a lighting ordinance. Is this pretty consistent with their requirements?
With what we looked at, it sort of falls in the middle. It's not as strict as some, but not the least restrictive.
Okay. Debbie, who is a qualified professional?
Any of the design professionals, engineers.
I mean, are we adding a new layer of cost? Are we adding a new approval process, or is this something that would be a part of the overall design and could be made a part of that?
Given that it's for new commercial development, most of that does have your professional designers who would have designed a lighting plan already. We did have the section where the zoning administrator might exempt someone for submitting that plan, and that would be for the smaller operations where this may be a substantial expenditure outside of what they were planning on doing.
I tend to be kind of visual, and so, I mean, before I think I would be willing to recommend this, I think we need to identify some existing properties that have current outdoor lighting that would be compliant and non-compliant under this, so that we can sort of be able to look and see what we're proposing. I mean, I can't tell you what forty-five lumens is. I don't have a clue. Is there some way that we could identify some properties that would, that are already in compliance with this versus those that are not, and be able to see what the differences are and conclude for ourselves in that regard?
We'll certainly try to find those.
Okay. That's a great idea. I'm like you. I don't have a handle on this nomenclature, but that's great. If you could, email that to us as soon as you could, and that'll give us an opportunity to go out individually and take a look at some of these locations at night. Does anyone else have any questions?
I do. You have, let's say, an existing service station, for example, that wants to go in and update their canopy system? Is that going to be considered new commercial?
If it's a new canopy, it would be.
I mean, it's already being used as a station, but that, my understanding from what I read is that if they replace that canopy, then they're going to have to fall under these new standards.
They would, because they'd be pulling a new building permit, and it'd be a new structure.
So if they replace the canopy, but don't replace the exterior, like, for instance, stuff that lines the exterior of the property, that lighting, I mean, how would that work? Do you have to replace it all or not replace any of it, or, I mean, in the instances where you're doing an outfit?
It would be, it would be the addition or the new part that would be required to meet the new specifications.
Okay. Debbie, do you think we could get a design professional that does this sort of work to come in and speak to it and say how difficult it would be to come up with this, or how easy it is?
Certainly try to do that.
Tell me a little bit about the full cutoff and fully shielded, like, for instance, under E, E-one intensity, under number two, that item number two, it says, "Surface-mounted fixture incorporating a flat glass that provides a full cutoff or fully shielded light distribution." What are we talking about there?
If you look on your definition section, there's a little diagram of a full cutoff, and it's basically no light is, it's light that's directed downward, and none of it can be more than ninety degrees above that light fixture.
I would like to know, too, and I don't know if this is something, but I wouldn't mind getting some security people in to understand some lighting requirements for outdoor camera systems. And I'm not sure that that even applies here, but, you know, I would be concerned about, especially some of the commercial areas where you're prone to drive-offs, or folks that are parking lots where pedestrians or folks could have some security issues, you know, how those cameras are going to read based on the lighting standards shown here.
That's like a good idea, too.
I mean, it's kind of a tough time right now, a lot of that's going on.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, so I guess what we would like is, if you could, get back with us first regarding some examples within the county that we can go out as individuals and look at that are compliant and non-compliant. And if also you could design up, excuse me, line up a design professional possibly to come in to visit with us at our next meeting and be prepared to guide us through this to some degree, and also if you would check on the security piece that Michelle, and we can address it at the next meeting as well.
We'll work on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, well, I know we've got a lot to absorb. I'm like Scott, the nomenclature that they use is Greek to me, so I'm going to need to study it quite a bit, and I will look forward to the next meeting and listen to some input from some other folks, help us guide us through this process. Staff have anything else related to this subject?
No, sir.
Okay.
Is this a priority? I mean, has, are the commissioners pushing for something quickly on this, or is this just a?
It's another one of the items that they asked us to work on.
Okay. Okay, well, if we don't have anything else regarding lighting standards, at least for this meeting, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is discussion of administrative changes to the zoning ordinance. And if you would, Debbie, once again, please walk us through this.
These are requirements or changes that we're recommending that are administrative only. We would add a new definition to the zoning ordinance for retaining wall, as there is not one before. For the structure, for the definition of structure, which is now that which is built or constructed, we would add some additional information that, about setbacks, so that there are certain structures that would be exempt from the setbacks in the ordinance. And those are structures that are detached less than twelve feet in length on any given side, and less than ten feet in height, and incidental to the residential use, utility poles, fences ten feet high or less, and on-premise signage. And this is just, so this would be like a small utility building. There are a lot of small lots out there where they just, somebody wants to put a little utility building in, they just don't have room to meet the setback requirements. Utility poles, fences, and on-premise signage would be exempt from the setback requirements. And then to add a definition of utility pole, we would amend subsection seventy-eight, six forty-two, which is the dimensional requirements section. There's a sentence just above the dimensional requirements table that says, "The dimensional requirements for buildings and land in the very zoning district shall be in accordance with table two." We would substitute the word "structure" for "building," so that it would apply to more than, than four walls with a roof. We would amend subsection seventy-eight, six seventy-seven, D-three, which is the procedure for obtaining a conditional use permit, the section that deals with the plans that have to be submitted for conditional use permit. And in addition to the proposed location and use of all existing and proposed structures, we'd also require that the location of any proposed retaining wall and the height of that retaining wall would be included in that plan. And for subsection seventy-eight, six seventy-seven, D-twelve, again, procedure for obtaining a conditional use permit, the development plan submission, we would add twelve, which requires that elevation rendering be submitted, so that you have a more clear picture of what the retaining walls in particular would look like. And those last two are things that we looked at in the, as we initially started looking at retaining walls, when it was broken out into a standalone ordinance, these sections were left to be included in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Debbie?
Not to get too obscure, but here, what would, is the intent here with the structure definition, are there things that would not meet the structure definition that could be constructed on-site, such as a monument or something along those lines? And is that separately dealt with in the ordinance?
Well, it's, to be a little bit more concise, the, you're talking about subsection seventy-eight, six forty-two.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the definition of building says it includes structure, but before that, it says it's four walls and a roof, and then below it, it says it includes structure. But to be clear for the dimensional requirements for setbacks, we want to make it clear that it's not just buildings, but it's all structures. So it would apply to, say, a cellphone tower. There are other things that are structures that are not necessarily a building with a roof.
Yeah, I mean, there are probably a lot more than just that, so it's, I'm sort of curious if the intent here is to try and say that anything that's constructed that's above ground basically meets the definition of structure? Is that what we're saying?
Um...
If I went out and tried to build a duplicate of the Vance Monument out on my private property, is that a structure?
If it required a building permit, it would be a structure.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the cellphone tower example falls into place, because you want to try to eliminate situations where there's a conflict between one section and the definition sections, and somebody says, "Well, this isn't a building, it's a structure, so I can do whatever I want." So we just want to try to eliminate that sort of thing.
Okay. Where did the elevation rendering come from? That's, it looks like it's going to be add quite a bit of work to the project.
It was intended to give just a more clear picture of what the proposed project would look like.
Just seems like if you show the maximum height of retaining walls and that type thing, it would be sufficient to be able to picture what would be going on as far as the height of walls are concerned.
It, well, it was part of what we looked at before when we were talking about retaining walls.
Okay.
And it's just to give a more clear picture. If we had seen the retaining wall out on seventy-four, perhaps that might have made more of an impression as to what it was going to be.
I missed some of the previous discussions on this. It looks to me like, Rod, it's kind of, that statement's kind of authored to help laypeople, I mean, those of us that read plans all the time, all we need is the, you know, the hard drawings and showing the wall heights, but it appears to me it's more to help laypeople that may be reviewing things or want to comment on it. Well, it's adding a fair amount of expense to a site role. Yeah, yeah.
My only thought on that is, what if you get into the site and you find that you've submitted a certain type of wall, and you find that the soil or whatever the conditions on the ground change in such a way that they would have to change the type of wall, not necessarily the size or anything else? And I'm not sure that that's something that happens. Y'all might speak to that more. Would they have to resubmit, or, you know, because they've already said this particular kind of wall? That'd be something that can happen.
Also creates a subjective kind of a thing, doesn't it? Yeah. Well, Bernie's the wall expert, but I would say, from my experience, that anything's possible. You know, that could happen, but it doesn't happen very often. It's kind of unlikely that it would happen, that once you selected a wall system, you kind of go with it. Typically, once you've selected a wall system, part of the due diligence process is pretty extensive soil testing's been done out there of the existing conditions and so forth. But it's not to say it can't happen, just what you described. Is that fair?
Yeah, I can't think of a single example off the top of my head.
I can't either, in my experience. Yeah. Josh?
Excuse me, sorry, did you have something?
I was going to say, I can't think of several times where people put the wrong type of walls in.
Like ignored the plans.
Well, I know what you're saying. Didn't get any engineering involvement in it.
Yeah, I got you.
Didn't work out, and you have to fix it.
Josh, do you have anything?
No, I mean, it's the same language that's already in the wall ordinance, isn't it?
It is, this would be an amendment to the sub, I mean, the zoning ordinance as it pertains to applications for conditional use permits. So we looked at it when we were thinking we were going to put the retaining wall language in the zoning ordinance. Once it was taken out and made a standalone, then we still had these changes for conditional use applications to add.
Yeah, the first three items appear to be just kind of cleaning up things.
Yeah, the first three items appear to be just kind of cleaning up things, whereas the last item is an addition. Is that right?
The, yes, the last two are changes that are specific to the retaining wall.
Right. Okay, anything else?
Yes, for conditional use permit.
Is this on? Just a note regarding the standards, the development submission standards for a conditional use permit. The zoning administrator has the authority to waive them. So if the applicant can present a good reason to the zoning administrator, he will waive certain requirements.
From a process standpoint, do these need to be advertised and then hearing held?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I'll just, instead of voting, I guess we'll just kind of poll the board. Are we in favor of going ahead? I'll just go start on this end, Rod. What do you think about going ahead and advertising this language?
Sure.
Josh, move forward.
Yeah, I don't see anything.
I'm good with it. I think we're all good with it, so let's move forward. Okay. That concludes that. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is our public comment period. For those of you that haven't been here before, excuse me, I got a new phone, and I don't know how to run the thing. It's one, I don't even know how to turn it off and on. There we go. Sorry, I got, it's, the learning curve, I'm afraid, is going to be about six weeks. It took me a day, and as one of the androids, it took me a day and a half to learn how to answer the thing. Really did, when it goes to sleep and everything. I thought it was cut off. Thank you. There you go, coach. Now, can you turn it off? There we go, it says power off. Thank you. Anyway, the public comment period. Please come up and identify yourself, and you've got three minutes. And I'd appreciate it if you'd respect that. Who would like to go first? Ms. Stiles.
First, I'd like to say, if you want to learn how to use your phone, you need to get a little kid. The kids will help you.
I've been told that this week, a couple times.
And to program and all that stuff on your TV, too, and your computer, you need a kid.
Yeah.
What I wanted to talk about was the lighting ordinance. I'm very much in favor of controlling the excess lighting that goes in directions other than where it's actually needed. It actually has a big impact on a lot of, of the creatures, the birds that are migrating, the bats. All those kinds of animals are adversely affected by excess lighting, as are people who wish to enjoy the night sky. And one of the problems that is not addressed by this is people who put an area light at their house, up on a big pole in your neighborhood, where it, there's no cover or no way to restrict that lighting just to that person's yard. And particularly, I think, it's a problem when they're up at the top of the ridge, or places like that, that we used to enjoy in the nighttime, and then to see, looking at the mountains in the night, and there are too much excess light. But just in your neighborhood, your neighbor puts up one of those lights, and then it confuses all the birds and the other creatures. But besides that, you, it really restricts your enjoyment of the night sky, or your ability to go to sleep, or get your baby to go to sleep, or any of that kind of stuff. So I'd like to see some of those ordinances of restricting the spillover of light apply to residential area lights also.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Again, please identify yourself, where you're from.
Hello, Chairman and Board members. My name is Bernard Argiere. I've lived in Hawk Creek Valley.
Bernard, if you could please spell your last name for me.
Okay, A-R-G-H-I-E-R-E. I've lived in Hawk Creek Valley since nineteen ninety-two, here in the county. I'm also, was very much involved with both Woodfin's lighting ordinance, and in the drafting of the latest version of the Asheville lighting ordinance. And I want to first commend and thank the staff and the board for considering a lighting ordinance. They're extremely important for more reasons than dark sky and health, which are important. But for the aging population, which includes me, glare is a real big issue. And lights that aren't fully shielded pose a lot of unsafe glare. So basically, I think it's great that this is being considered. I wanted to point out two things that are not in the ordinance that I think are extremely important. The woman who spoke before me hit one of them. Asheville and Woodfin do not do anything to residential lighting except one type of light. And they both say they can't have this lighting, or the pole light, unless it's shielded. They're not saying they can't have that pole light, but it can only be there if it's fully shielded. They get more calls and complaints about that light, the city of Asheville, than any light, because it creates a lot of glare and light trespass into adjoining properties. One of those, the bulbs that are in those lights produce as much light as six one-hundred incandescent bulbs all put together. So that's a lot of light blowing over into the neighborhoods and on our beautiful ridge tops. So I recommend you consider that one restriction. I'm not saying go back and have everyone who has them, shield them, no. I'm talking about new installations. Just don't allow new lights like that. Let's not make it any worse. The other thing that's not mentioned is street lighting. Some of the biggest offenders that I get calls from, and so does the city, are these developers who come into these developments, put up the developments, Hawk Creek's an example, and they put up these lights on a pole that are acorn-shaped, no shielding at all, and lights going everywhere, including people's bedroom windows. And that's a big complaint. So I recommend that you at least require those kind of lights, meet the same standards that the highway department uses, which is full cutoff. Street lights normally are full cutoff. There are great examples of that lighting on the UNCA campus. They use full cutoff lights on their, for all their new lighting now. And it's extraordinarily safe, beautiful lighting, no glare. So there's a good place to look, right outside their new science center, the Zeiss Building. And for security issues, these lighting ordinances actually help security. The city of Asheville, on their commission, which I was on, had two members of the police department, and they basically wanted cutoff lights, especially on the wall packs, those lights that are on the side of the walls. Because when they're trying to get a perpetrator, and they're approaching a building, and that light's glaring into their face, the perpetrator sees the policeman better than the policeman can see him, or her. So they prefer a full cutoff, where the light goes down and not into their eyes. So there's a good reason for these lighting ordinances, for safety as well. Good lighting can be very safe. That's it, and I appreciate you giving me the time to speak.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments, input.
Good morning. My name is Jenny Mercer. I'm a science educator at the Health Adventure, the Science and Health Museum in Asheville. I teach astronomy outreach programs to the schools. And it's getting harder and harder to find a dark sky. So my interest, of course, is that you guys be as thorough as possible. You know, we want our citizens to be expansive thinkers, and there's really nothing more expansive than looking up at the sky. It really changes your point of view. So that's all I have to say. And as well, actually, it's past time that we stop being frivolous with our use of electricity. So I think the efficiency angle to this is really wonderful. I encourage you all to be as thorough with this ordinance as you can. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jim Hornaday, H-O-R-N-A-D-A-Y, resident in Oteen right now. Been in Buncombe County since nineteen sixty-six. Retired educator, couple of minor strokes, has left me a little less articulate than I used to be. But I've noticed a tremendous decrease in the interest in science amongst young people. I don't know if any of you have noticed that, but science and education in general. They really want more entertainment. I have to wonder if part of this is that when they go outside, if you look up at the night sky and you don't see stars, you don't develop any real sense of wonder at the glory of the universe, glory of nature. At least you're less likely to. I just would like to encourage you to be as restrictive as you can be, within reason, in whatever ordinance you draft. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Kelvin Crisman, C-H-R-I-S-M-A-N. I'm a resident of the Broad River area, the address is out of Black Mountain. And we have lived here, my wife and I, for about six years. We're natives of Charlotte. We raised our children in New York City, and it's, it's in Byrnes. My wife has a summer home in Black Mountain, so we've come down here every summer. If we didn't do that every summer, my children would have never known what the Milky Way looks like. Because of the light trespass that you get in, in New York, and the lights from the, from the city, we could see fifty bright stars, the planets, that was about it. So there is something to our, our human heritage to be able to see the night sky. So these, these ordinances are important for that. We are now very blessed to live in, in a home that is up at thirty-eight hundred feet. We can look up into McDowell County, down into Henderson County, and see a fair amount of the southern part of Buncombe County. And we see lights almost every night, a new light coming. Looking down from where I am, I shouldn't be able to see them. They should be directed at the ground and not up into the sky. It's a benefit if you want to be seen by the guys in the International Space Station, but I doubt if they're looking for you. And you're wasting a lot of energy to do that. So there's real benefits aiming these lights down, not into the neighbors' houses, and that kind of thing. And that comes back to what was said earlier, to, to restrict these outdoor lighting that folks put on their homes, that developers put in, in new developments. We see those coming, and they can do that without spending a lot of extra money to put in the lighting if they just put in the right lighting the first time around. And that's going to save them energy, it's going to save their neighbors the light trespass, and that kind of thing. So I would encourage you to go beyond just including the commercial structures, but also to go to developments and outdoor lighting, and, and home street lighting, that kind of thing, because it's not adding a lot of cost to the, to the effort that, that folks are making to build these things. Mr. Alexander, I'm sympathetic to your issue of getting the Greek out. And there are terms in there that are, that are hard to follow. I'm on the session with the Black Mountain president here in church, and our mission statement currently has Greek in it. So I've been saying to our pastor, we need to get the Greek out, so people can understand what we're talking about. But I think there are ways to, to get you over that, and get some people in here to explain those to you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Doesn't appear to be, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of our agenda today. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Does anyone else have anything they want to add? Before we go? I think we had some good comments here, and I really think we ought to take a look at that residential. I do, too. I do, too.
I'd like to invite you gentlemen to attend to our astronomy club's, ladies, to attend to our astronomy club's public star games this weekend, next weekend. In the five years, I don't know which yet, to keep it scottish. This is not physical, it's a party, parking lot betrayal. We have telescopes set up, it must be springtime, and you can appreciate many.
That's the first weekend in October? Is that what we're talking about? Saturday's the first. I'm sorry, yeah, I got you, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's right, okay.
Well, the club has one slide at Hestrow, can I just do astronomy in Asheville and talk?
Astronomy in Asheville, okay. Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Anything else? Well, then we'll adjourn until next time, which is October three or two? Three? Three. Yeah, okay. Thank you. See you then.